The invocation is going to be given to us tonight by Mr. Shelton Miles from St. Stevens A and E Church.
Lord, spileheads, God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, you are the eternal, I am. We come this night to say thank you. We thank you, God, because you're God, and besides thee there is no other. And Lord, as we move into this business session, we pray that everything will be done in for the glory of your name, in decency and in order. God, we pray that things will be done to benefit all people. This is our prayer. We pray in Jesus's name. Amen. Amen.
.................................................................................
Thank you, Reverend Miles. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. Anyone have anything they need to pull?
Move the consent agenda. Yeah, move the consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Number seven, consideration of Operation Green Light in support of Veterans Resolution. Whereas the residents of New Hanover County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selfishly served our country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and the women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas New Hanover County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom in placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas veterans continue to serve our community in veteran service organizations, religious groups, civil service, and with other local organizations to support fellow former service members. And whereas there are more than sixteen thousand veterans in New Hanover County, and through comprehensive benefit counseling, claim development, and community outreach, New Hanover County Veteran Services Services assist an average of two thousand veterans and eligible family members to obtain, uh, uh, to obtain, retain, and increase the benefits they are entitled to through the Department of Veterans Affairs and other agencies each year. And whereas approximately two hundred thousand service members transition to civilian communities annually, and an estimated twenty percent increase of service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas studies indicate that forty-four, uh, to seventy-two percent of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life and are at high risk for suicide during their first year after military. And whereas New Hanover County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. And whereas New Hanover County Veteran Services is proud to support veterans and family members and will be recognizing Operation Green Light for veterans by lighting the Health and Human Services Building, Health and Human Services Annex, and Senior Resource Center in green to let the veterans know they're appreciated and supported. Now therefore, be it resolved that the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners hereby declares from new, from now through November the twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of veterans, of our veterans, and be it further resolved that the observance of Operation Green Light, New Hanover County encourages its citizens to recognize the importance of honoring all of those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence from November the sixth through November the twelfth, adopting this sixth day of November, two thousand twenty-three.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a couple of comments before Ms. Betsy speaks.
Okay.
You know, as a veteran myself of the U.S. Navy, for me, it was an honor to enlist at eighteen and serve in the Navy. And coming back home to this community, I find that we're a very veteran-rich and a very veteran-supportive community. And not only do we have one of the national cemeteries in our community, we also have a VA clinic here. The work that Ms. Betsy Graham does, uh, should be commended every day. They serve so many veterans in our community, I hear nothing but great things about what your office does and what you do. At every military event in our community, you see Betsy, and you see her team representing New Hanover County. What I do know is that our Veteran Services Department stands heads above shoulders above any in this region. And I would say in our state with the services that we provide. Uh, unlike Cumberland County, we are a community that has a lot of retired and military veterans here. And so for those that have served, we salute you. We say thank you for your sacrifice. Not just for those that have served, but also for their families, because when a spouse serves, their spouse also serves in the military as well as oftentimes that spouse is deployed to protect our freedoms. And I would tell you, having come from another country this past week, we should be thankful and we should be grateful to be able to walk out of your home and walk in any community and not be afraid. To travel to another country and be confined to the premises because it's not safe to go out in places. Let you notice how blessed we are to have folks like Betsy in her department, serving the veterans in our community. So again, we salute every veteran in our community and say thank you.
Anyone else?
After Betsy.
Betsy, go right ahead.
Okay. Thank you all for the unanimous adoption of that. I'm so glad that we're able to do this again this year. It really shows our support and all of the great initiatives. As I continue to say, you know, day after day, we have one of the best jobs in the county. Um, we, every day is Veterans Day, and we get to see the dependents, the spouses, the veterans. Um, and we just assist them on a daily basis, because not everyone is eligible for VA benefits. But because we take that holistic approach, if it's not VA, then we're gonna find something that can help them and meet them where they are. So again, I appreciate it, and I hope everybody has their green lights, um, so they can show their support and all of the initiatives that are going on this weekend continuously.
Thank you, Betsy.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to add on. First off, Betsy, thank you so much, uh, for your service and for your service in New Hanover County and all that you do. Uh, I think kind of kicking off Veterans Day this coming weekend, we also have the viewing of, or screening of a documentary film over at Thalian Hall. It was produced by the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. It's called Veterans Battlefield, and it will be at five P.M. on Wednesday. It's a free screening. It's only about an hour and ten minutes, but it is the most packed and impactful hour and ten minutes that you can spend. It features veterans from across the state of North Carolina, including here in New Hanover County. Uh, I have seen the film. It is, uh, definitely not only worth seeing, it should be seen by everyone who's concerned, and not just related to veterans, but to families and anyone who appreciates everything that the veterans have done. Deals specifically with the mental health and behavioral health issues uh, that often come along with, uh, active duty and sometimes not active duty of being a veteran. So I strongly encourage it. I know, Betsy, you have been very good about getting this message out to all of our veterans organizations. I just wanted to take this moment to reinforce that.
Definitely. Thank you. So more information can be found on the, um, association website, but also on the veterans website, you can see more information on where to register for that event and other events going on in the county.
Mr. Chair, just very briefly, sir, it's very important that we recognize veterans. Thank all the veterans in this community and beyond for what they have done for this country. It's such a small ask to put this green light into your residence or your place of business. But imagine what it will mean to the folks that have done that service for this country to drive down the street and recognize, oh, they thought of me. Oh, they appreciate what I did. All you have to do is put a green light in your place of business, your residence. Please do so. It's the right thing.
One other comment, Mr. Chairman. Is there any veterans in the room? Would you please stand?
Oh, yeah. Next is consideration of White Road culvert replacement and adoption of associated budget item. Mr. Lo?
Yes. Good afternoon, Commissioners. White Road is a, is located in the Ogden area of New Hanover County, uh, kind of connecting Gordon Road to the Courtney Pines and Quail Woods neighborhoods um, in that part of the county. It's between, uh, I one four, I forty and the new military cutoff extension. Um, the area in question where we have this culvert is strictly between the Brittany Lakes Boulevard, sorry, Brittany Lakes Road and Courtney Pines Road, uh, to, towards the northern end of White Road. A majority of White Road is DOT maintained. However, this, this segment here is not. It never got turned over to, uh, by a developer to the DOT. The current condition, uh, was identified after Hurricane Adalia passed through the area back on August thirty-first. Um, our crews were performing, uh, post-storm inspections, driving around the county on that day. Um, passed by this area, noticed a large cavity alongside the roadway. Um, we did some further investigation on it. There's substantial separation occurring between the pipe segments under that road to the point where the curb is completely compromised, the asphalt's becoming compromised. You can see in the picture, um, in front of you there. The, this existing culvert is currently consisted of three, three pipes, approximately thirty-six inches in diameter. Um, we did conduct a flood study as part of the Military Cutoff Extension Project in partnership with the DOT. It was identified that this, this should be much larger. Um, and so what was being proposed to go in is actually an eight-foot-tall by twenty-four-foot-wide, um, aluminum arch. Um, so it'll be a single opening, much larger than what is there today. Here's an example of what's being proposed to go in. This is from a DOT project, um, that, uh, the vendor that we've had discussions with regarding the culvert has provided to us. Um, so this is a, a type of structure that DOT routinely uses as part of their maintenance and, and construction projects. So where we stand today, the project and the survey, the project survey is complete. We're about thirty percent into the design. We've identified that there's some utility relocations that are needed. Um, there's a water line that needs to be moved out of the way. Um, Duke Energy has some facilities in the area that we need to work through. Um, we're working on contracts with geotechnical consultants and, um, and our hydrologists to make sure that everything here is, is good and updated, what, what it needs to be. We're estimating the cost is approximately eight hundred and forty thousand dollars to carry this project through to completion, and from here today, we're anticipating twelve to eighteen months to complete it. So the Stormwater Services Fund currently has a, a fund balance of six hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars. That's unrestricted. Um, it's not enough to, to complete the project. Part of the reason for this, we've been building funds over the last two years. We started collecting these fees two years ago, and we've been putting money aside to build for emergencies. This emergency came on a little bit faster and bigger than what, you know, was anticipated in that timeframe. Um, so what we'd like to propose in this budget amendment is to loan, to borrow a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars from the general fund to be paid back over five years through the Stormwater Services Program. Um, this would allow for continuation of all the currently proposed projects and maintenance that we plan to do through Stormwater Services, allows continuation of that as well as completion of this project. Um, and it allows our fund balance to continue to build up for the future so that we can better address these, these situations if they arise, um, in the future. Um, and so this, any impacts to, to the ERU rate will be evaluated during the fiscal year twenty-five budget discussions. Do you, do you all have any questions or, or comments?
Tim, thanks for that rundown. If we borrow only a hundred and eighty-four thousand, we're basically gonna wipe out, uh, what we have currently in the Stormwater Utilization Fund, correct, when we do this project?
So are you, are you stating if we borrowed a hundred and eighty-four thousand instead of eight hundred and forty?
Yeah, so that, yeah, we're borrowing the, uh, one hundred and eighty-four to add to the six hundred and ninety-seven we currently have, correct?
Yes, it, it would wipe out the,
Wipe that out.
That, that fund balance, which is, we're trying to build for the future
Yeah.
to address this.
That's, that's my concern. The rates that we set for the Stormwater Utility Fund, uh, were set how long ago?
I believe they were calculated in two thousand and eighteen. Um, and the fees started being collected two years ago.
Right, and we've seen tremendous escalation in, uh, everything, uh, as far as construction goes, et cetera.
Yes, correct.
I know you're just giving this now. I'd appreciate it if you, um, your opinion in a future meeting, and maybe an agenda briefing, on what you think, or if you think that that, uh, the rate should be upgraded, and what you think the optimum amount to have carrying forward in that, in our utilization, uh, Stormwater Utilization Fund should be. Because clearly, if one event can wipe it out, we need to do some more thinking on that.
Yeah, I believe that'll be under consideration in the fiscal year twenty-five.
Mr. Chairman, ju- just to make sure that there's, um, clear communication, we're not asking to borrow a hundred and forty. We're asking to borrow eight hundred and forty thousand dollars from the general fund.
From the general fund? See, that's why I thought you said at the agenda briefing, but that's not what I heard here.
Correct. It's, it's eight hundred and forty thousand is what we're at.
So that we don't have to touch it?
Correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And the, the associated and assumed ERU equivalency would be twenty-three cents a month, two dollars and eighty cents for a year, thirteen dollars for the five-year period.
Okay. That is different than what we just heard here. So we're, we're going with the plan that we heard at,
Yes, sir.
Right on. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Tim, uh, I'm very familiar with this section of White Road. Uh, you've got several neighborhoods that would join. I think Leon Skinner with, um, Southern Home Builders initially was a developer for that whole area, then sold off bits and pieces to different developers. Uh, how long is this section of White Road that's not DOT maintained?
So the section that's between Brittany Lakes and Courtney Pines Road is, is around, um, around seven hundred feet long. Um, it does continue up to Rabbit Hollow. Um, I'm not familiar with what that length is. Um, it's just, right now, we've been just concentrated on that segment in between the two. In conversations with DOT, they, they value that as a pretty important connection there to get to Courtney Pines Road and Torchwood Boulevard and provide access up to that part of the county.
So with them having a great value there, how do we, uh, start the process of getting that section of White Road dedicated to the NCDOT so they can maintain it themselves? Uh, I mean, that community is, is quite old, uh, probably built in the late, mid to late nineties. And I know there's a connector road as well for a whole lot of residences back there. And at the same time, a large portion of that road, I think there are no homes on it. Uh, so unlike the program that we have where we can, you know, build homeowners if they want to come in and do a petition, there's no one there to build, because it's just vacant land, a, 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 a good bit of it. So how do we have that conversation with DOT to take over that road number one so that we don't get stuck with this build number, number one, but also that it's maintained in the future? Because again, with all the homes that are being built back there, buses that are traversing back there, you know, what happens if the road becomes, uh, and disrepaired where ambulances or whatnot can't get back there?
Yeah, and you hit on a good point on why that road likely wasn't turned over, because it is vacant land next to it. Um, but we are already in conversations with the district engineer, um, and the division office about the, what the process is. I currently ha- already have a meeting scheduled for next week to, to look at what that road needs to get it to DOT standard.
Thank you. And, Mr. Kudry, uh, do we need to in- increase that fifty, the fifty-five dollars a year that residents in the county pay on their tax bill to cover the costs for the stormwater utility?
It, Mr. Barfield, I, I don't have a committed memory. I apologize. But it is somewhere on the scale of sixty-three dollars is what's in my mind.
Do we need to increase that number? Uh, I know we're gonna have more things that are gonna pop up and...
That is certainly something that if the board would like us to, to evaluate during the budget process, to advance even more the collection of capital for, um, unantic- unanticipated maintenance projects, that we, we will absolutely do that analysis.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion. We approve the budget amendment for eight hundred and forty thousand dollars, to replace the White Road culvert.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass. The number nine is consideration, thank you, consideration to purchase property for the Gordon Road Fire Station and declare current county property at sixty-one oh two Gordon Road as surplus. Mr. Hall?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, we're bringing to you consideration to purchase two point seven seven acres of property um, near the forty-eight twelve block of Gordon Road to use that property to build the new Gordon Road Fire Station on. Um, we have completed a phase one environmental survey, and we've worked with DOT. Um, the two point seven seven acres will not be impacted by the right-of-way acquisitions that DOT currently has underway for widening of Gordon Road. Uh, this parcel is suitable due to an access road that will be a part of the project that will connect it to Gordon Road at its intersection with Harris Road. And, uh, we are really excited to bring that forward. Um, at the same time, we also want to seek, uh, permission to declare the property we've previously purchased at sixty-one oh two Gordon Road as surplus. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question? Yeah, thank you. Donnie, uh, is it just the location, is a better location for us, why we switch from one to the other?
So, um, back in August of two thousand and twenty-two, we purchased, uh, one of two parcels at sixty-one oh two Gordon Road. We were also in negotiations to purchase the property at, um, sixty sixty-eight Gordon Road. And those negotiations fell through, and then when DOT came over and they got the easement that they needed in front of the property for the widening, um, we really thought that we could probably find a better location for the fire station, and we were lucky enough to work with the current property owner. Um, with it being really just pretty much in that intersection of Harris and Gordon Road makes our ability to connect to those communities, like we were just talking about in the previous item, um, much easier for the fire rescue community response.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? I assume being at that light will make things easier too.
Yes.
Just like the Pine Valley,
Absolutely.
city there being out of light.
Yep.
Anyone else? Is there a motion?
If you need a motion, a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just a second. Donnie, before you step away, it was noted at the, uh, agenda briefing, uh, earlier that we've received, uh, a second year of certification at the national level for our, uh, fire department, fire and rescue department, that now places us within, from my understanding, one of maybe three hundred in the entire nation.
In the world, isn't it?
Internationally, is?
International.
International.
Internationally. That's, that's incredible. I just wanted to give you that moment in the sun here.
Thank you.
So everyone can see you, you know, not only here in this room, but across, uh, New Hanover County on their television sets as well. Congratulations, and thanks for the great work.
We appreciate that. Thank you.
And if y'all go to a stoplight today and see some firemen standing out there with boots, put some money in there. Okay, number ten is a public hearing. It's a request by Porter's Neck Village applicant to rename approximately three hundred-foot-long private road from Porter's Neck Road to Blue Heron Drive, named Plantation Drive to Village Center Drive. This is a public hearing. We'll hear a presentation with the staff. Then the applicant and any other opponents will be allowed fifteen minutes for the presentation and additional five minutes for rebuttal. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the board, this is a public hearing to consider a request to change the name of a private road, Plantation Drive, to Village Center Drive. We haven't had a street renaming in a while, so I'll kind of go over a little bit of the background on, on this process. The North Carolina General Statutes establish that the Board of Commissioners is required to hold a public hearing for any proposed change to an existing private road name. The statutes establish the minimum procedures and public notice requirements, including a public hearing notice in the newspaper. Uh, New Hanover County goes a step further and provides mailed notice to any property owner along the roadway. However, in this particular instance, the applicant owns both sides of the private road. Uh, the proposed street names are also reviewed by county staff ahead of the public hearing to ensure that the road name meets the county naming standards in our addressing ordinance. And, uh, we have reviewed that, and Village Center Drive does comply with those, uh, road naming requirements. The road under consideration is located along Porter's Neck Road and serves as the primary entrance to the Porter's Neck Village Community, formerly known as Plantation Village. Private road is approximately three hundred feet long. Currently, there are no properties with addresses off of Plantation Drive, and no other driveways or properties access the road. Additionally, Porter's Neck Village owns, again, both sides of the road, uh, in this area. So finally, based on the review of the proposed road name and compliance with the New Hanover County addressing ordinance, staff recommends approval of the proposed name change to Village Center Drive. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions, and the applicant is present. Can answer any questions as well.
Any questions, anybody? Okay, there are no, uh, there's no one that denied the project, so thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Uh, before we proceed with the vote, I would like to invite the applicant to the podium. Based on the board discussion and attendance presented during the public hearing, would you like to withdraw your petition or proceed with the vote? And if you have anything you want to say, you can go right ahead.
I do not, but thank you.
Would you like to proceed with the vote?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay. Number eleven is a public hearing request by Cindy Wolf with Design Solutions, applicant to rezone approximately one point six three acres, zone to R fifteen residential located at sixty-two eighteen Carolina Beach Road to CZDB dash two, regional business for rental truck office and warehousing facility. So this is a public hearing. We'll hear a presentation from staff. Then the applicant and any opponents will be allowed a, a, a total, just make, make sure on this, anybody that wants to speak in opposition, you have fifteen minutes altogether. So just be kind to each other and share it. And an additional five minutes for rebuttal. So now we will hear from the staff presentation. So now we will hear from, uh, staff presentation.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. This application is a request to rezone approximately one point six three acres from the R fifteen residential district to a conditional B two regional business district for a maximum four thousand four hundred and fifty square foot office and warehousing facility. This project includes the rental of moving trucks, moving equipment, and the eventual warehousing of portable storage containers similar to those used by the company Pods Moving and Storage. The site is located at six two one eight Carolina Beach Road and has been zoned R fifteen since nineteen seventy-one. At that time, the purpose of the district was to ensure that housing served by private septic and wells would be developed at low densities. Since then, the Carolina Beach Road corridor has experienced a transition to higher density residential and mixed commercial districts. As we can discern from the current zoning map, this subject parcel is situated in an area with multiple zoning districts in the vicinity. This area photographed details the higher density developments with Sellers Cove to the west and Beau Rivage Plantation to the south. Also detailed here are commercial districts directly north and east of the subject lots. This slide depicts the site's existing conditions. The image on the left of the aerial details the rear of the subject lots, while the image on the right details the front portion of the subject lot. Here are examples of single-family residences one might see in the R fifteen district. The image on the right portrays an example of a single-family residence found along a major corridor. As the proposed development consists of moving truck and moving equipment rental and the warehousing and portable storage containers, the following images are representative of what is being requested. The left image details the U-Box and U-Haul moving and storage facility located on Market Street. This facility is within the B two regional business district. And just south of that, to the right, is the Penske Truck Rental Agency that is also located along Market Street, but within the city of Wilmington's jurisdiction. Located along Government Center Drive, this image of units moving and portable storage of Wilmington represents the applicant's proposed warehousing of portable storage containers. As illustrated by the applicant's concept plan, the proposed development is directly located off of Carolina Beach Road. On site, there is an existing single-family residence that prior to the development will be removed. Along with the residence are two accessory structures that will remain a part of the proposed development. They will serve as a moving truck rental office and a supply storage, uh, space. The applicant will be adding a three thousand two hundred square foot warehouse to store the associated storage containers. Each container is designed to provide temporary storage and can be transported from s- one site to a customer's location and then returned. The site is currently served by septic and well. And here we can see where the applicant has proposed the stormwater pond. As we can see, enveloping the lot is a combination of easements and buffer yards. Running parallel to the north property line is an existing ten-foot wide utility easement. The southern property line will consist of a twenty-foot wide vegetative buffer yard. And while the western property line will contain a thirty-five foot wide type A opaque buffer between the neighbors of Sellers Cove and the subject lots, the applicant has also conditioned a twenty-foot wide public access way along Carolina Beach Road for future bike and pedestrian access easements. It should be noted that when commercial projects are adjacent to residential lots, additional use standards are enforced. In this case, a rear setback of thirty-five feet is required by the UDO to act as a buffer between the proposed developments and the Sellers Cove community. Though this rear buffer is mandated by the UDO, the applicant has conditioned that it will consist of an enhanced type A opaque buffer yard consisting of three rows of evergreen shrubbery and an additional two rows of staggered evergreen trees that are anticipated to grow a minimum of fifteen to twenty feet tall. A single driveway will provide access to the sites. Entering and exiting will consist of a right-hand in and a right-hand out. Within eight hundred feet, there are two points for travelers to make a U-turn along the corridor. To the south of the parcel, there is a traffic light where Cathay Road meets Carolina Beach Road. It should be noted that the site's single access point does not include the private access way that is Condo Club Drive, which is used specifically for the residence of Sellers Cove. Nearby, there is one approved subdivision under developments and one state transportation improvement program, the details of which are in the staff reports. If developed within the site's current zoning district, a maximum density of four single-family dwelling units would be permissible, generating approximately three AM and four PMP hour trips. Per the WMPO's use intensity of mini warehouse, small office building, these, the estimated traffic generated is expected to be one AM and one PM peak hour trips. As this rezoning's estimated traffic generation is under the one hundred peak hour trip threshold, a traffic impact analysis is not required. Part of any development, the project will be subject to NC DOT's driveway permitting standards. Due to the site's size and proximity to the Carolina Beach Road corridor, the parcel is found less likely to be further developed residentially. Nearby commercial development includes restaurants, grocery store, and other community-level services use. On July seventeen, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Commissioners adopted a new strategic plan for the fiscal years two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-eight. This plan focuses on, focuses on three core areas. Workforce and economic developments, community and safety and well-being, and sustainable land use and environmental stewardship. The proposed B two rezoning will allow a business that can support the surrounding community to locate in a transi- excuse me, in a transitional area along a major roadway corridor and in pro- close proximity to a number of households. The strategic plan aims to prepare for the long-term needs of the businesses and to maintain new business growth within two and a half percent of the state. The proposed commercial zoning district will enable a new business. The comprehensive plan designates this property as being part of the community mixed-use place type. This place type includes commercial uses and encourages infill development along highway corridors. In addition to serving as a transitional, transition between the highway and neighboring residential uses, the proposed project will provide a use that could be appropriate in nodes as well as transitional areas while providing service to nearby residents. At the October fifth planning board meeting, the proposed rezoning was met with a vote of seven to zero in recommendation for approval. The planning board found the application to be consistent with the twenty sixteen comprehensive plan. The board also found recommending approval of the project was reasonable and in the public interest because the proposed limited commercial uses are generally encouraged in the community mixed-use place type and would serve nearby existing and future residential developments. The recommendation was accompanied by set of conditions placed on the proposed rezoning. Excuse me. Staff recommends alerting condition, excuse me, staff recommends altering condition one from any vehicle rental will be ancillary to the uses described to, quote, "uses shall be limited to offices for private business and professional activities and warehousing with associated moving truck and moving equipment rental," end quote. Staff believes that this amendment to condition one better encompasses the full intent of the proposed project. Staff also recommends that condition four be amended to replace the term pods so as to not specify any one type of storage company. Something happened. The nine proposed conditions are a combination of applicant, staff, and planning board considerations towards the proposed development. They include limiting the proposed land use, providing a public access easement along a major corridor, excluding commercial RV and boat storage, prohibiting outdoor storage of storage containers on site, providing height restrictions on all structures, providing general considerations towards exist- exterior lighting, providing an enhanced type A opaque rear buffer, stipulating the location of security fencing, and finally, giving direction as to the location of the dumpster on the proposed site. Should the rezoning be approved, development of the site will be subject to additional development review to ensure all land use regulations are met. This concludes my presentation. I am available to answer any questions concerning it or the staff reports. Mr. Jamar Johnson of the WMPO and Mr. Tim Lowe of County Engineering are here to answer any questions within their expertise. The applicant, Ms. Wolf, has prepared a presentation and will be able to answer more in-depth questions relating to the proposed site developments. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. DeBiddle?
Yes, sir.
Is this your first presentation to our board?
Negative, sir. This is my second.
Man, I did not recognize the first one. You did an outstanding job on the second and you and I have a lot in common tonight, but I love the pink tie.
Thank you, sir.
I do have, uh, one quick question. The easement that you referred to for, um, future development of, um, multi-use trail, what, what is the size of that and is that something we're suggesting or requiring on all developments in that area?
Yes, ma'am. So that easement is twenty feet wide and is a, a project that has been announced by, uh, I want to say, New Hanover County's Parks Department. Um, we don't require it. We strongly ask for any future rezoning applicants to consider incorporating that so that we can create said easements along that big expanse of Carolina road that is pretty hard to navigate.
And, and has that been agreed to?
Uh, yes, ma'am. This has been a conditioned, I want to say it's condition number, uh, five or six. Thank you. Close out. There you go.
Good evening. Um, excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm Cindy Wolf and I'm here on behalf of Shirley Norris and, uh, the potential developer of this property. As Wendell pointed out, Carolina Beach Road is lined with businesses, old and new, and higher densities of residential development are being requested monthly. Traffic is always an issue. The properties to our north are already zoned B two and certainly can develop by right with any of the uses permitted in that district. The subject parcel, as I said, was owned, is owned by Shirley Sellers Norris. It was subdivided back in two thousand and three to create the tract that in the rear became Sellers Cove. That condominium project, in fact, was one of my designs back in two thousand and six. Um, and you can be sure I stood here in front of a pass board and argued its consistency and appropriateness for entitlement because as you can imagine, there was surrounding opposition, um, to the ninety-nine units, certainly to the three-story buildings. That was not very common back then down in this area. But I'm proud of the community resulted. It's certainly an attractive complex and you'll find tonight that it has very proud neighbors. Ms. Norris continued to live here in this front tract and her tract is currently occupied by her home and several accessory buildings. Because of the adjacency of the multifamily to a single-family home, even though it was hers, Sellers Cove was required to provide a buffer yard along their entry road. That was accomplished with a three-to-four-foot-high earthen berm and evergreen screening vegetation to provide visual opacity higher than the standard six foot. And as you can see, the existing vegetation has certainly accomplished that. With that said, uh, the proposal is for a moving vehicle and rental equipment business. This is the site plan that is in your packets and that we're talking about tonight. There had been some issue at the beginning and Wendell pointed on it when we, he, staff has recommended the change of some of the verbiage in the comments and the conditions, that the original title that I had on the plan was U-Haul. For that, I apologize. There are certainly a variety of vendors for almost every business and some descriptions have become synonymous with particular ones. We all say Kleenex for tissue, money of a say, Xerox for a copy. In my mind, U-Haul was pretty much the gold standard of moving rentals, but this project has no current association with any particular company. My point was to provide a description of the use that everyone would understand. There are several well-known companies whose services would be the criteria for the proposed business. Certainly, they include Penske, Enterprise, Budget, and Hertz that we sometimes think are only car rentals, but they do have truck and some moving vehicle rentals. Um, and many of them have now involved into the temporary box storage. The existing house will be demolished, um, but the accessory buildings will be renovated and adapted for use as the business office and storage of moving materials. There's no vehicle repair or hazardous materials involved in the business. As a future phase of the project, we included the warehouse for the boxes. It's not a self-storage facility. There's no public access. Boxes are delivered to the home of a renter. They fill it, they call for pickup, which is handled by an employee of the business on a flatbed truck with rollers. The employee drives it back to the facility, offloads onto a scissors dolly and deposits the box in a building with a, for a contracted period of time. Eventually, the box is redelivered back to the renter or a designated relocation. Maximum box dimensions are roughly, um, eight by seven by ten. They can be smaller depending on the company, but they're maneuvered around on these rolling mechanical scissor lifts. There are no noisy motorized forklifts. This use, as I pointed out at the beginning, is an extremely low generator of traffic as far as this part of Carolina Beach Road goes. The entry drive will be permitted by DOT and whatever safety improvements they deem necessary will have to occur before they can occupy the site with the business. There is a full turn lane there and we're eighty feet beyond the taper that gets to that full turn lane. There are only a handful of employees at any time and customer pickup drop-off is throughout a typical day. This is a normal business hours type of use. Customers arrive to pick up their trucks during those hours. I'd emergen- I'd imagine that sometimes there could be an after-hours drop-off, but those spaces are far at the front of the site. You drop the keys in the office slot and you get your lift home. Again, very low impact. The field survey, um, which was part of the more detailed site plan, shows that the site drains away from the rear boundary and towards the northern side of the tract, stormwater pond will be installed to address the water quality and detention for stormwater permits. There seem to be a variety of opinions as to the opposition of the proposal, but most of the arguments, I believe, have been fairly speculative fears of industrial calamity or poor driving skills of the general pub- public. As I mentioned earlier, the immediately adjacent property to the north of the subject tract is straight zone B two. Some of the less desirable uses in B two include auto repair, animal shelters and kennels, bars and nightclubs, all by right. The only reason I mention this is that the main intent of, my main intent is explaining the difference in conditional zoning as compared with uses that would only have to abide by standards in the ordinance. In my mind, the foremost and very valid concern for the condo complex is visual screening and separation of uses. I'd like for you to keep in mind in the examples that Wendell showed of some existing similar types uses, both of those uses are in areas that preceded most of the ordinance, all of the street yard requirements and probably even some of the buffer requirements. So keep in mind that any new development has a whole new list of screening, separation, and aesthetics. Um, with the adjacent condominium building being three-story to the full permitted height, at that time thirty-five feet, we obviously cannot totally screen all views out over the tract, which they already have. However, as I previously pointed out, they have a buffer requirement, or they had one, for the benefit of Ms. Norris across the back. Those trees and shrubs have to stay. We have no control over those. That's a positive. You can see that the existing vegetation that they do have has grown to provide well in excess of the minimum six foot of screening height. For our part, we have created a plan that does not make any use of the full thirty-five-foot rear setback that would only generally have a twenty-foot buffer yard. Um, which means that parking or pavement or anything else could have been back there, but we have created the box, the building for the boxes as our rear, uh, use. So along with that, a varied vegetative screening up to twenty-foot plus in height is what we're offering with fast-growing evergreen plantings. Any activity at the rear of the building, any, any activity in that rear building is oriented towards the front and will in itself provide shielding of labor or lighting. The rear building is also limited to twenty-five-foot height. Other buildings on the plan are existing and only one story. So between the conditions for exterior lighting, the extended buffer in the background, we believe we've met some of those concerns. With that, we believe that this is consistent, reasonable, and in public interest. Certainly, as staff pointed out, community mixed-use place type acknowledges the types of uses that are provided, proposed as services that are compatible. of uses that are provided, proposed as services that are compatible with the tract's proximity along Carolina Beach Road. This proposal certainly improves the form and function of an underutilized site, maximizes desired land use efficiency, and is an excellent opportunity for good economic development and increased tax base. I'd be happy to answer your questions. Thank you.
Cindy, I would like to know, at any given time, how many rental trucks were sitting out there parked in the parking lot?
We have approximately 30 to 35 spaces, and it would be delineated.
So that's where, so people can just go there and rent a rental truck?
That's correct.
Or they can rent space?
Well, there's, there's usually rental trucks, there's rental trailers, there's certainly, you know, a variety of different sizes. And the spaces that I have marked are sort of adjusted for some of those different sizes. What happens in here is somebody makes, probably online most often, a proposal to rent a truck. They come on a designated time. An employee goes and gets the truck from these spaces and takes them to that pickup drop-off, which is next to the customer parking in the middle, so you don't have just the general public driving trucks and trailers around this site. But then they're out on a major thoroughfare as far as the exit goes.
Mr. Chair? Let me ask one more question. So the, the, the people that live back in Sellers Cove, are those, did you say, three-stores?
Yes, they are.
So they can see all this? The ones in the, the first ones you come to?
The ones in the third floor would certainly look out over the warehouse building. Its garage doors would be facing east, facing Carolina Beach Road, so they would not be able to see the garage doors.
Just the back of the building?
But then they could certainly see out over the site to whatever extent that buffer between us and them and what we would be installing would screen.
So the, the buffer in the back behind the warehouse, that, are those trees that will grow pretty fast?
Those are new trees that we're putting in, which would be something like a Leyland cypress that would grow 15 to 20, and then certainly the six-foot evergreen buffer, which is normal regardless. And then they have buffer trees that are well-matured on a berm in their property.
On their side?
That's correct.
Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Cindy, on that, I was just looking at the, the site plan over the weekend. It looks like that there's about a six-foot drop in elevation from the existing Sellers Cove condominium building, yeah, there you go, to the site where the box container storage building will be. Do I have that right?
Yes and no. That 49 that you're seeing on the western part of the site is the top of the berm where their plantings are. So what ends up happening is their finished floor is probably closer to the 44 or 45, which is the beginning of our downhill. Our low spot is in the, what, 42 range? So yes, they are slightly above us, and then they are three-story.
Also, I know there was some discussion about the potential of tractor-trailers delivering the, you know?
The boxes. They do not.
Boxes, yes.
These are all, let's see. These are generally the, like, 24 stake bed truck sizes?
I see.
They're like a F, F-350 flatbed? When they pick it up, say?
I just wanted to make the differentiation. I know, I noticed in some of the comments, there, there was a concern about, you know, tractor-trailers coming in.
Right. Where tractor-trailers would obviously come on occasion when they're moving trailers to a self-storage facility, that is not the case here. So there's no reason for any tractor-trailer to come into this site at all.
Got it. And was there any discussion internally, were there, about, just as a best practice, not allowing any idling of inju, engines as they unload their boxes?
That certainly would be a condition we'd accept. I mean, it's one box, one truck. As I said, they use a scissors lift rather than forklifts.
Yeah. So there's just one box per truck?
Generally, I guess there could be two if they put them 10 to 10, if that's the size they are.
I will, yeah. I'll wait for the sirens to pass. We wouldn't have a situation where we would have a half a dozen or a dozen boxes, you know, taking an hour or an hour and a half to unload or to load?
That I can't imagine, no.
The emergency outlet for the retention pond, what side will be located on and where will it drain?
It'd be along the north. It would come towards Carolina Beach Road as the topography goes to that northeast corner. That 10-foot utility easement could be a swale or certainly piped.
Yeah. Okay, but it's not going back towards Sellers Cove, correct?
No, it is not. And there's a berm there that would protect it. These soils are extremely sandy in this part of the county, so there is a good bit of infiltration that is a positive.
Also, I noticed the, you're going to rely on the private well and septic system that's currently there?
There is sewer and water. I, I know there's sewer along the front. We're evaluating the wisdom of hooking up to the sewer. I mean, we only have a unisex bathroom pretty much, so there's not a lot of need for it. So the septic system would have to be recertified through the commercial, you know, health department release of it. But hooking up to the sewer is an option to the front. It's along the frontage. But the well seems fine. We don't...
I note here, and I know that all these are just guesstimations, the size of the septic field you have here.
That's already there for the house, so that's a three-bedroom house.
Okay. Is that accurate, the size that you have there?
Ah, no, I couldn't say that.
So the proximity to the stormwater pond is, what caught my eye in that?
As I said, it would have to be recertified. But the advantage is, if it cannot be recertified, we have no reason to relocate it. We would hook up.
And the placement of the fence that you have here on this drawing or this graphic, is that what the, the intent is?
There is an existing fence along the northern property that just is there. It doesn't have a lot of reason, but the more white-colored fence would be the security fencing that the planning board recommended we go ahead and show so that all of the buffer area is outside of the security fencing.
Great. Six-foot-tall chain link, is that we're looking at, or?
Pretty much, yes.
And they'll, will have a controlled access on the front there that I, I'm assuming whoever wants to get in drives up, punches a number in, and that's what opens the, the gate, or, or no?
We haven't really discussed gating it at this point, but gating is often, you know, useful for these big trucks. I don't know that there is as much, I mean, certainly the building is the protective security for the boxes.
Right.
But the gate would certainly have to have a dedicated stem length from the Carolina Beach Road into the gate, and that would be coordinated through DOT during the driveway permit.
Okay, good. I also noted on your drawing, and I know it's representative, but I, I count only 22 parking places for potential rental trucks. Could some of those be double-bayed or, you know, doubled up to get to your 30 to 37?
I, I misspoke if I said the 30 to 37. I mean, the spaces we have certainly, for a half dozen, maybe, my spaces are too wide, they could use smaller spaces, but this is the extent of how the lot would be laid out. That being said, you've got some out, you've got some in, so yes, that varies as far as the total number of what they would handle.
What I saw, and I'm so glad you addressed it, in that photo, they showed up a representative truck rental area there. I do enough business in those, that, that looked like trucks willy-nilly, kind of parked all around, and it's, it's not representative of a well-managed truck rental place, which is what you have laid out here. And I know that you, you mentioned that the, the rules around that have changed a lot, but I don't think that was a, a good or an accurate representation of what this could look like.
I totally agree. I mean, as I said, those, because this has to go through TRC, it is also hopefully going to be under the guise of an approval of a conditional district, and therefore, there's a hammer to be had if it, if they start parking trucks in the street yard or along where the bike lane would be or anything like that. So it's more a control based upon the fact that we're looking at conditional district.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, and, and I appreciate Commissioner Zappel, that was exactly my question. How many trucks can be on the facility? Did you talk about that? And I just missed it.
Basically, we've shown roughly, you know, 10-foot by different depths of spaces. You would park one vehicle in every one of those spaces. There is some versatility there, certainly. If they're smaller, maybe they could fit seven instead of six up at those, that top, but they would not be allowed to be parking in non-paved areas.
How many spaces?
It's showing 22, roughly, then the pickup-drop-off spaces.
And just one more question. I see the diagram on the south side facing Condo Club Road. Is that the, how do you anticipate that landscaping?
That landscaping on our path, and again, they have that berm with the landscaping that I showed the existing picture of, we'd still be required to either, to supplement whatever existing vegetation is on Ms. Norris's property already to provide a six-foot buffer, six-foot-high screening of that property boundary. Thank you.
Okay, now the opponent or opponents have 15 minutes total. I think there's a little, there's a time on your screen right there.
My name is Alessandra Diaz. I'm a resident Sellers Cove, and I appreciate you all for hearing out our side of this situation. So before I get started with my presentation, I want you all to take a moment and just think about someone that's maybe not an immediate family member, a neighbor, somebody that you know, that you care dearly about, and keep them in mind as I travel through this presentation. So I'd like to point out, there's been a lot of confusion in terms of the information that we have received, so I apologize in advance. I am going to go off of the initial information that we were given, which is that this was a U-Haul facility. So now it's no pods, but there's pods, I'm not certain. However, I would like to point out that on this diagram here, this warehouse is labeled as a U-Box warehouse. Up in the top-right portion, you'll see this is a U-Box container. There was some confusion on what these types of containers are made out of. I'm not going to read this entire description, but they are pressure-treated plywood, which, as you can see here in this image, does require a forklift. I believe that's what that's called anyways. So continuing on with this, a certified driver can bring your truck on a flak, flatbed truck and have it placed on a flat surface using a forklift. These trucks here, I've included some different varying lengths, and this is all based off of information, again, that I found on the U-Haul website. Here are some equivalent sizes, 11 foot, 6 inches, 10 feet, and 20, excuse me, 24 feet. So noting that these trucks can actually be, and this is according to a Google search, 48 feet to 53 feet in length. So let's take a moment and pause and think about this area that is encroaching on the Beau Rivage, and then next up, we have Cathay Road, where there have been, I don't know how many accidents. There was an accident where a car was turned on its side right before our meeting, our first meeting about this, so, which I'll touch on later here. So no U-Haul, but it's now a rental moving truck. Again, no dissing on U-Haul. However, they have a wonderful diagram here for us to view, some different trucks, different sizes. And I'd like to draw your attention to gross vehicle weight at the bottom, ranging anywhere from 6,700 pounds all the way up to 25,000 pounds at a max. Now, I realize people are probably not going to be pulling into this facility with fully-loaded trucks. However, I would like to make everyone aware of the empty weight of the 10-foot truck, which is the most, I would say, basic moving truck, is moving a studio in a one-bedroom apartment, so I kind of assumed that was a middle ground. The empty weight of that vehicle is 5,790 pounds. As we know, this area of Carolina Beach Road is where it's transitioned into people going much faster than what they are closer to the Monkey Junction area. So the deceleration lane, I don't know anything about what that looks like. However, I would like to point out, as I was doing some additional research, the most common thing that people state that is dangerous about driving these trucks is when you get over that 55-mile mark, which is where they suggest you don't go past that, but people do, the braking. And it's not that the truck is incapable of braking, but it's more so unskilled drivers, for a lack of better word, driving a vehicle that could potentially be 8,600 pounds. Let's see. Also, I would like to point out, the U-turn, the deadly U-turn at Cathay Road, that intersection is, there's a woodworker that his business comes almost all the way up to the road, and I'm not entirely certain the rating, turning radius of these types of cars, but I would think that that would be something that maybe wants to be taken into consideration. Also, something else that came up while sitting here, how will these vehicles be washed? And where will all of that water drain to? Into the retention pond? That is of a concern, given my next point, which is, this shows where our pool is. You can see it on the other images. You know, I, I have two dogs, so I'm out walking all of the time on the property, and I feel like it's very unlevel. We've added up land and built up land, and, you know, when we start tearing things down, it does naturally drain north. That is definitely true. However, the stormwater pond, if for whatever reason that overfills and that spill-off goes to Carolina Beach Road, which is what was stated, is there a chance that it's going to drain into our swimming pool, which is quite literally right there where the stormwater pond is located? Also, the other thing that was not mentioned, that was mentioned in the previous meeting, is no trash. As we know, trash dumpsters are quite loud. I, you know, 6:00 AM, hearing a trash dumpster slamming, I think it was determined at the previous meeting that that dumpster would be located at the rental office, but I didn't hear any mention of that, so I just wanted to touch base on that. Let's see, and it was stated at the last meeting that there wasn't expected to be much trash, but I know any time that I've ever moved, I'm shocked at the amount of trash that I've collected over the course of my life. So also, something else that came up here that I would like to point out is there are only 22 spaces, as you all have noted, and when Ms. Wolf was just now presenting, she said that there would be 30 to 35 trucks. So I'm not quite certain, given the sizing of these trucks, how this is all going to work out. It is also quite concerning that our driveway is the next turn. So how are we going to prevent these trucks from missing that turn, which I myself have almost missed my turn, and I live there, and I turn into the next available space? And our driveway, again, is not wide enough to account for someone turning around in a U-Haul truck to make a U-turn, and then possibly preventing us from entering and getting into our one and only driveway into our complex. Next up is another safety concern. This is the most recent accident that occurred right before, just days before our last meeting. Again, you can see in that bottom-left picture, that is our only enter and exit point that is blocked due to an accident. I realize accidents happen. We're not putting something there with the intent of there being accidents. However, again, to reiterate, this is our only entry and, and entry and exit point. And then you can see, as far as the eye can see, traffic is backed up all the way down Carolina Beach Road. Continuing on, this is a man that approached me in the hallway on a Sunday afternoon. That, where he is at, is a retention pond where the stormwater and everything else is going to be. I want to know how we're going to prevent people from wandering I want to know how we're going to prevent people from wandering about in that buffer yard. And it's going to be a bigger buffer yard, to my understanding, of greater opacity. And I'm fairly certain we're, you know, trying to help with the homeless population, I know that. But what's going to prevent this from being the next tent city in this city? I'd also like to show you a more accurate representation of our buffer yard. The picture that was taken was at an angle that doesn't show the gaps and the inconsistencies throughout. And I didn't take an image of the one up and down our driveway, but most of that vegetation has since become diseased and/or is died, dead. Next few slides, I'm going to fast-forward so that my other people can present. But these are all accidents with U-Haul trucks, and I intentionally chose these. These are all in North Carolina. These are all similar road situations as what Carolina Beach Road is. I'd especially like to draw your attention to the Fairfax County. I know that's not here, but just pointing out the criminal activities, I guess, that get drawn with that. Thirty-two year U-Haul trucks reported as stolen, as well as a suspect that stole a U-Haul truck and had weapons and things like that. Young man down at the bottom here was someone that was decelerating on Martin Luther King Road and slammed into the back of a U-Haul truck, and is now passed away. And I send my deepest condolences to his family. He was only eighteen years old. There's a head-on crash in Durham Road. Two people died and a baby was hospitalized. Again, more accidents on Carolina Beach Road and Cathay Road. That intersection is lethal. I don't know how many more times to say it. I just don't think that putting a U-Haul center is going to be beneficial for any of us. That is also, the end of our driveway is also a school bus stop. And I want to know who's going to be held responsible when a moving truck slams into a bus full of children? Because this image here, I believe, is right out front of our property, if not further up close to Cathay Road. Again, here is, oops, safety plan. I'm not going to read through this because I know that you guys are aware of it. But of the thirteen performance measures, we're on track for three. And I read somewhere, this area is not on a list of improvements. If we look at the rest of Wilmington, where it seems we put the cart in front of the horse, we have projects everywhere and we can't get anywhere. I understand we want to continue to develop Wilmington, but I just don't believe that this is the place to put a U-Haul center. This plan is unnecessary and it is redundant. This is a space that is for sale right now. It is ready to go. And let's not forget about all of the other rental facilities, storage units, everything that is nearby. It's redundant. We don't want it, we don't need it, we do not need this. Storage facility, U-Haul center, moving pod, truck rental, I don't know what to call it at this point, but this spot out front needs to remain residential. We need to keep our community safe, and by allowing this here, you are putting all of us in danger. Now I want you to remember that person or people that I asked you to think of before I gave my presentation. And I want you to look out at these people sitting here because they all live there. And those are the people. We might not be in your immediate circle, but these are the people that you are putting in danger. That's all I have.
Applicants rebuttal? I'm sorry, get right ahead ma'am, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name's Melanie Ferrara. I live at six forty-five condo. I'm on the back end, so I'm going to be seeing this project. All I can say is, because I don't want to take up that time, is that all of you are more than welcome to come any weekend to my balcony, have coffee, see what I see every weekend, see those dirty trucks, see that noise. I won't beep in your ear, I promise, okay? Because that's all we're going to hear. But please, I mean, this, I mean, I'm sure you don't, like she said, you don't want your mother, your grandmother, or your senior friends in this project. And the accidents are going to happen. I know if I was a commissioner, I would not want my name attached to this because there are going to be accidents. I personally saw one at Cathay where, yep, that, that truck was going fifty-five. He hit the back end of that woman. I can see to, see it to this day, where she, she just twirled around. And if it had been a few seconds earlier, she would have been broadsided. It's, it's, it's not funny commissioners, it's not. We're dead serious. We just do not want this, and we do not understand why it couldn't have been kept residential. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak?
Thank you. I'll just make a couple of comments as far as addressing those concerns. Certainly, I apologize for my error in estimating the total spaces. Any good business is going to maximize their use of the property they're developing. That being said though, the point is that, the key is we're defining what our paved area will be. What he can fit in here, that's all about running a good business and tech, technical standards of that business. But the conditional district does limit them from parking on the street yard, from parking back in the septic field, and from doing anything behind the pod warehouse based upon the conditions of approval. The berm along the western boundary actually does wrap around the northwest corner, adjacent to the pool. So the pool is technically above the elevation that the pond would be. But regardless, there are rules and regulations for how the pond has to be designed and its outlet overflow towards the northeast corner of the site. Any maintenance of the vehicles is by contract with an off-site vehicle repair business. So that was one of the things we talked about early. There is no auto repair on this, of the trucks or any other vehicles. Wash-down, if there was wash-down of the trucks, they needed washed. It could be done off-site certainly, and some of the car washes. If it was done on-site, it would still be over top of the pavement, and therefore that runoff water would go to the stormwater pond. Because any runoff or onto the surfaces of this project are required to be detained in the stormwater pond. I can't address our bad driving skills in this day and age. It's unfortunate, it's sad. We need to pay more attention, but that doesn't preclude, I mean, any uses of any land in our community. If those two tracks to the top end up being a nightclub, I mean, yeah, that would be very sad with the type of traffic and driving that occurs. But again, I'd be happy to answer questions if there are more.
I just, I just want to make one more note. You know, when Sellers Cove was built way back in two thousand and seven, okay? Somebody used, okay, back then, they stapled, okay, our Tyvek. So we have been, yeah, after fifteen years, we have major holes. So we have fixed four units, we have six more to do. So can you guys promise me that there won't be any damage to my six forty-five building? Because we can't afford anymore. We still have those to fix. And we know that one, we don't even know who the builder is. And we know, once you guys come in and bulldoze stuff, we're going to get rodents, we're going to get different stuff. And I just, I won't even be able to open up my, my windows or my doors anymore because of all the dirt and grime and stuff from those trucks. This is like the worst project. Please, please say no. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak? Any rebuttal? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there any board discussion?
Mr. Chairman. I guess for me, over the years, I've probably voted for as many of these as I've voted against when it comes to storage facilities. And for me, it really depended on location, where things are located and the impact on those surrounding areas. There was a unit that I did not support on Carolina Beach Road going into Echo Farms East or Echo East. Although it did pass, when I did support based on the location. At the same time, in the Monkey Junction Storage, I supported the expansion of that project because for me, it was in the right area and location. There's some units off of North College Road next to Laney High School that I did support with the modification of the outside looking more like a business as opposed to a storage facility. To me, aesthetics were important in that particular area. The challenge that I have here is the twenty-five-foot building at the rear of the property. And I'm thinking about what I would want to see, looking out of my bedroom window. And it wouldn't be that. Understanding that the property owner is the same person that sold the land for Sellers Cove. I think when you're selling property, you need to be cognizant of the intent and the impact of those that you're going to sell it to, especially if you still own an adjacent parcel, what that's going to look like down the road. And so for me, that, that, that is a challenge. I live off of College and Walmore, and as far down the road as I am, sitting on my deck, I still hear a good bit of road noise from College Road on any given night. But I'm several thousand feet away from College Road, but I know that I hear that. I'm thinking about folks who live in Sunset Park area, although they had no control over the state ports when the domes were built for the wood pellets. They had to sit out and look at those big domes, to me, would be a challenge. And so I, I can't support this project. I recognize the need for storage facilities, but for me, it's got to be in the right location. For me, this location is not the right location with a twenty-five-foot building that backs up the people's backyard. I know that I would not want to look out my back window again and see a, a building of that size, that sort. Those are my comments for now, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Very respectful of the comments of Commissioner Barfield. However, what certainly catches my attention here is the, the lack of additional traffic that it would cause onto Carolina Beach Road. I know we've had great debates about literally the hundreds of apartments that we've approved along Carolina Beach Road, and I know that I have spoken and been very vocal about that. In this situation, I think it is inevitable that the first layer of Carolina Beach Road will not be reserved for residential. You just don't see it, as we've seen the commercial and retail move up and down Carolina Beach Road. It may not be the most desirable use of it, but it certainly is not going to be adding more traffic onto Carolina Beach Road. I don't believe that, you know, leaving it as, you know, in a residential or an R-15, it will stay that way. It'll be another business. And probably what, any one of the type businesses that Ms. Wolf brought up, you know, every, I don't know what it is, I won't speculate, but it is not going to stay residential. I think that the applicants have really added a lot of conditions, trying to be as sensitive as possible. Yes, the twenty-five-foot building in the back is going to make a difference. But I'm afraid of what, what could be put there. And, you know, the height of other buildings, residential, apartment buildings, or other commercial buildings along that way. I think that the Type A opaque buffer that is planned and agreed to in the conditions will be very helpful in both sound as well as visual. And the other, you know, eight different conditions are going to really help mitigate many of the concerns. I know this is not what the neighbors want, but there's change that's happening all along Carolina Beach Road. And even though it doesn't seem like it now, this, this may be much better than what, what could be put, you know, in there. Those are my comments for the moment.
Well, one thing, one thing that New Hanover County is experiencing right now is our population is getting older and older and older. And people are saying, you know what, I'm tired of mowing the yard, I'm tired of painting the house, tired of replacing the roof, the house is too big. They're selling the house for more than it's worth, and they're renting an apartment that isn't big enough to hold all their belongings. So they're going and renting a storage unit so they can go to look at their stuff once a month. And if you notice, every time there's apartment complexes go up, within a mile, there's a storage unit place nearby. So I think that's a little bit of what's happening. But I can't imagine building any houses where that is. I don't think you could sell them. I think probably what should have been done was when they were building Sellers Cove, should have put another building out by the road.
So for me, that is the entrance, even though they don't own the property, to Sellers Cove. It is also between that and the Beau Rivage development, where I know a lot of folks that live over in that area. I think it's going to be a lot higher intensity than we think with the trucks in and out, the number of trucks that's going to be on the property. There's already a lot of traffic in that area, and I just, for me, rezoning something from residential to a business such as that is probably not, for me, what I would want to see as the highest and best use for it.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
And I do recognize that a commercial use is probably going to take place there. I just don't think that this is the right commercial use. Again, with a twenty-five-foot building behind my home, we're, we're trying to get rid of an I-SOAR by our government center. We'd like to get rid of an I-SOAR by our government center because of the aesthetic appeal. I, I just know that if it were my home, I wouldn't want to be looking at the back of a storage facility and then hearing the adjacent noises that come from that. But I do recognize that something commercial would probably be built in that area, that strip of land there. If not, it could also very easily be some townhomes built on that same acre-plus of land as well. But I would not see a residential strip-built home in that, on that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't think I would see that there.
Mr. Chair. I'd just like to respond to a comment that you made just a minute or so ago, is I don't believe this facility is going to support people who are coming to look at their stuff. In other words, the idea behind this is that you put your stuff into the box, the box is hauled away and stored inside that building. If you want to see it, you call them up and they pick up the box and take it back to your house. And then you can go through it as much as, as you want. But it's not the kind of a facility where you can go by and go through yourself. Ms. Wolf, do I have that right? Meaning there'll be less, you know, no traffic caused by that?
Yes, sir. This is not a storage facility. This is a vehicle rental facility. And what is typical these days is to have these box, a place for boxes. It's just become an accessory type of use to moving vehicles. You have moving supplies, you have moving vehicles, they're for rent. And somebody down the line said, wow, wouldn't it be a lot easier for us to put a container in your front yard for temporary storage of it? So no, there is no public access to this facility if it had containers in the back building. So no, there is no public access to this facility if it had containers in the back building.
Thank you, awesome. While, while you're there, Ms. Wolf, the, uh, concern that Commissioner Pierce brought up about the, you know, trucks, the rental truck, uh, going in and out of there and the closeness of the driveways between Sellers Cove driveway and, and this driveway is an issue that will be looked at by the, uh, I'm sure the, the technical review of the driveway permit.
And the Department of Transportation, yes. Um, I mean, at a shopping center, you have a driveway quite often, every two to four hundred feet. I mean, our driveway is at the northern part of the tract. It is on a full lane, just like every other driveway on Carolina Beach Road. And this happens to be a turn lane. And the turn lane isn't exclusive to the Cove, to Sellers Cove development, it goes all the way down to Beauregard. That can be good. It goes all the way to Cathay. So it is a normal lane on Carolina Beach Road as far as its traffic service.
And how far is it, uh, the driveway from your driveway to the, not yours, the proposed driveway to the Sellers Cove driveway?
It would be approximately eighty feet. It'd be the full frontage of our site, basically.
Do we have anybody here from the DOT who could, uh, respond to that?
I think they're more traffic planning, but still, I, they can probably.
Jamar Johnson, WMPO.
Morning, uh, Mr. Johnson. Is there, uh, a specific, uh, distance between driveways on Carolina Beach Road or a, a large thoroughfare like that as a requirement of, of a driveway permit?
Um, there is none. Uh, spacing for driveways is not something that the, uh, DOT regulates heavily. But I do know that from the center of, uh, Condo Club Drive to the center of, uh, the driveway for this, uh, proposed development is a hundred and fifty-seven feet.
And you're saying there's no, uh, written standards for, for that distance. Uh, certainly you've got many years of experience in this. Is this, uh, something that would be recommended by the WMPO or something that would not be recommended?
That would not be something that I could answer in this form at this time.
Have there been other projects that have been approved that have an equal distance or less?
Yes.
I see your backup's coming.
With apologies, my name is Scott James, I'm with the WMPO. And, uh, there is actually a minimum separation distance between adjacent driveways, it's seventy-five feet.
Seventy-five feet?
Yes, that is the, uh, minimum distance between two adjacent driveways. If it's closer than that, the DOT would encourage that it be a shared driveway.
I see, the, uh, and that's center to center, correct?
Yes, my understanding is it is, uh, from the property line, so seventy-five feet from the property line.
Okay, and does that include on a major thoroughfare like Carolina Beach Road?
It applies to any roadway under review by the Department of Transportation, but the objective would be to minimize conflicting movements. If the frontage is narrow, they would go for the maximum available distance if they could not get a shared driveway. They cannot deny access, sir.
Thank you.
We'll close the public hearing this time. Any more discussion? Before we proceed with the vote, we'd like to invite the applicant to the podium. Based on the board discussion and items presented during the public hearing, would you like to withdraw your petition or proceed with the vote?
We'd like to proceed, please.
Mr. Chair, I move to recommend denial of the proposed rezoning. While I find it to be consistent with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan because of the proposed limited commercial uses are generally encouraged in the community mixed-use plan type and would serve nearby existing and future residential developments, I find denial of the rezoning request is not reasonable and in the public interest because the proposal is not similar in use to other nearby uses and would not serve as an appropriate transition between adjacent land uses.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Four.
Five.
Just for clarification, that request was denied.
Thank you.
I could kind of tell maybe you didn't, that, that's what that vote meant.
Thank you.
At this time, we got the, uh, some folks that wish to speak, Mamie Carlos.
Good afternoon.
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Yeah.
I'm from the Old Scottsdale Community, which is in the northern end of the county. It consists of about sixty to seventy homes. And we are surrounded, the, you, well, you are aware that the northern district infrastructure structure is growing in that county? Oh, I'm not in that. So, um, we are calling, we're coming forward to you all to see if we can get some assistance and get water in Cape, uh, from Cape Fear Public Utilities. Maybe through grant monies or some financial assistance. We have a total of, uh, forty percent of our residents are seniors and retirees. We are thirty, three hundred feet from a water line, going three hundred feet from water line. I'm one hundred feet from water line from my house, which is surrounded by all new developments. We are a quarter of a mile from the hospital. So everything is growing around us except this whole community. We, we have, we are having a lot of sickness, cancer, some are similar cancers. We cannot say that it is from the water, uh, not from the water. We cannot drink our water. We have been, wells have been, uh, being, having to be replaced. We have had a couple of people that had to replace their wells because the wells are going dry. We just feel like that we, since the whole county is growing around us in the northern end, we should be, have the opportunity by some financial assistance or grants to grow with them, to get up to twenty, twenty-three. Because these houses are some of, uh, where I've been in that neighborhood since, uh, for seventy years. And my, that house was there in nineteen fifty-three. So we have other houses and older, older, uh, members that are there that cannot afford it. And we've been to Cape Fear Public Utility and showed them our water and how bad it is. And now we are coming back to you all for assistance. We've had in the past that the county planning department, they, uh, had to help us with sewer. They did, they grant, did a grant for, um, they did a North Carolina Community Development Program Grant Funds that they assisted the seniors in the past fifteen or more years ago to get them up to standards with the sewer. So we're asking that you all to consider seeing if we could find some funds can be available either by grants or planning departments, try to find some funds available that can help us in this community. I got some more time. Thank you. Thank you, questions?
Ma'am, what was the community again, the name of it?
It's the Kirkland Community, which would be, uh, we, uh, we're a little, little beyond, um, Portisne. So we are a quarter of a mile from the hospital, which would be Creekwood Road, Forest Trail. On the other side would be McIntyre Trail, Stevens Church Road. And these all are the old houses in that, that's been there forever, that we can't, like I said, I'm a hundred feet away and it's no, my time is up, thank you.
Mr. Manager, can I ask that you get this lady's information and have someone look into that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, next is, um, Bonnie Murray, Murray?
Yes, good evening. I am Bonnie Murray. And in light of the response that you just made to Ms. Nixon Carlos, I don't think that there is much need for me to speak or say anything else to you since you do plan to investigate our situation. And I thank you so very much.
Ma'am, you're in the same community?
That is correct, I was here before and, so, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
It's great to know what Mrs. Murray's first name is. Uh, she taught me at Williston Middle School and when you're in school, you never know what your teacher's first names are. She was always Mrs. Murray to all of the students. And as an adult, I get to know what her first name is, so I'm excited about that. I would tell you that the county, we just started a pilot program, uh, trying to help communities with water in particular. Uh, our first pilot in the area is the Rock Hill Community off of Castle Hane Road. And I think we're going to be able to serve just over seventy households there, uh, that are adjacent to water lines i- in their particular neighborhood, all that are affected by PFOS and, and contaminated wells i- in that area. Our goal is to tap into some federal dollars, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Manager, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, to provide a, a greater access to the greater part of Northern County, unincorporated parts. And what we have found is that there are quite a few communities that, just like yours, uh, have water and sewer all around them, but not within them. Uh, my father lives off of Gordon Road, a neighborhood called Weaver's Acres, and there are neighbor, new neighborhoods all around him that have water and sewer, but not his neighborhood. And what we have found is that CFPUA has not been in the business themselves of extending water and sewer, but the county has been partnering with them to make those things happen. You mentioned the CDBG grants, uh, there's a great woman named Wanda Costin who worked in our planning department. Wanda passed away several years ago, but she did tremendous work on behalf of residents in our community, helping get homes rebuilt, water and sewer lines extended, um, someone that I, I greatly miss. Uh, I share with Mrs. Murray that the squeaky wheel always get old, always, always gets old at some point in time. And our goal is really to fill in these gaps and holes within the greater part of the county, uh, to provide assistance, whether it's federal grants, state grants, or local resources to help. And, uh, so I would tell you that help, I believe, is on the way. I can't tell you when, but help is on the way. Any comments from any one of our staff, Mr. Manager or Ms. Loper?
Commissioner Barfield, we are actively working with CFPUA. In fact, we had an update at the Agenda Review on Thursday about where some estimated costs for that last frontier project are. We will certainly look and Jessica's already making contact with this particular neighborhood to determine its adjacency and whether or not round two of what you just approved um, in kind of the northwest part of the county is going to be something that's possible here. If they're within a hundred feet, CFPUA may well consider that adjacent.
I know we've approved quite a few projects on Stevens Church Road. I know the first one that I voted for was probably some apartments that,
Yes, sir.
Um, um, I'm dropping his name right now, built, um, and I know that for the most part, water and sewer in the county has pretty much been developer-driven. We've kind of tapped in by expanding capacity with bigger lines and whatnot, but those are my comments, sir.
We'll close the public comment at this time and recognize the county manager.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I was hoping to make one quick comment about that, I'm sorry, sir.
Likewise, go ahead, Dane, go ahead, you go first, Jim.
I just think that it's really important to recognize that this is something that, uh, we, all five of us here, as well as our colleagues up at the state level, recognize that this is a very important issue that needs to be addressed. And we are really leading the charge on trying to get clean water up to all of the folks who are on some of these wells in the northern part of the county. I'm going to keep working hard on that. Thank you, folks, for coming in to come and talk with us about it, but it is very important to all of us that are up here.
Thank you for those comments. Uh, I would, uh, strongly recommend that if you haven't had your wells tested, there's a number, uh, through Chemors that you can reach out, uh, I say it's Parsons, is a company that'll come out and test your well water. I think it's an important step because if you can prove that you have PFAS, uh, in there as a part of your water, that opens up access, ooh, I see Ms. Thompson is on her way there right now, uh, there. But, uh, she's going to, I'm sure, provide you some of that information. But it's important to get your wells tested so you know exactly what is in it. That may open up other funding resources or other paths to get, uh, something moving quicker uh, as a part of the consent order that they're currently under, they being Chemors, et cetera. We also know that the county and, uh, the CFPUA, there's been funding set aside for, uh, additional studies to go, create a prioritization study, uh, so that we can see what areas throughout New Hanover County uh, have, you know, the worst problems, is the only way to put it. And we have, um, several millions of dollars, I think, four and a half, five million dollars. I got that number wrong, I see, by the look in your face, Chris. Uh, there, there's money there that you will be a part of, and so it's important that you do what you're doing, which is standing up and hollering, because that's going to attract the attention so that, you know, you end up on that prioritization list. We also know we have, uh, I believe, up to fifteen million dollars to do what we call adjacent hookups between CFPUA, uh, and those people who live adjacent. So as Commissioner Barfield said, yes, help is on its way, it's nowhere near enough, but the more you show up at these meetings, the more you raise your hand and do exactly what you've been doing, is showing up politely and saying, hey, I got a problem over here, can you help me? That's what's going to get this done. So thank you so much, uh, for, you know, working for your community and to make New Hanover County a better place to live.
Mr. Kugray?
Uh, yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as, as staff, we do have an additional item, and it should be before you on the dice, but it's a resolution to exercise eminent domain for tax parcel R-04916-003-003-000. And it would be for a public use. And if the board were to entertain it, we would also ask the board to approve a budget amendment for two point three six million dollars for the purchase of said parcel. And, Mr. Chairman, whether the board approves it or not, we would ask that you read the resolution as it's before you enter the public record, before you engage in discussion.
Yes, sir.
Whereas New Hanover County, the, the county has the authority to exercise eminent domain pursuant to Chapter 408 of North Carolina General Statutes. And whereas the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners, Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners serves as the governing body of the county and has determined it necessary to acquire certain real property for the public's use or benefit. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners hereby declares its intent to exercise the county's eminent domain authority to acquire all of the real property con- constituting New Hanover County Tax Parcel R-04916-003-003-000. Further, further resolved that the Board of Commissioners hereby authorizes Ward and Smith P.A. to serve as legal counsel to the county in the matter to send the required notice of condemnation and if necessary, to institute the action to acquire the above referenced real property by eminent domain. Further resolved, then the Board of Commissioners hereby exempt certifying services necessary for acquiring this pro- real property from the, from the provisions of Article 3D of Chapter 143 of the North Carolina General Statutes pursuant to the written exemption authorization in North Carolina General Statute, uh, S-143-64-32 adopted the sixth day of November, two thousand twenty-three.
Do we need a motion, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Uh, motion to approve.
I'll second that, along with the, uh, budget amendment that's attached.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Anything else, sir? Anything else, sir?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like just to make a comment to remind everyone out there. And if anyone's still listening at home, tomorrow is Election Day for the municipalities in New Hanover County. All three of your beach towns and the city of Wilmington, please go out and vote and elect leaders that represent you. It's very important that you exercise your right to vote.